We're recording, Jordan? Okay, great. I'd like to call to order the May 1st, 2021 Bayport City Council meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the Republic-
For which it stands-
One nation-
Under God-
Indivisible-
With liberty and justice for all.
Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mayor, same orders.
Here.
Councilor Carlson.
Here.
Councilor Hanson.
Here.
Councilor Dahl.
Here.
Councilor Gilmore.
Here.
All present.
Progress to the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any questions, comments, changes? If not, then Adam, would you, oh, would someone like to make a motion or approve tonight's agenda, please?
I'll make a motion approving tonight's agenda.
Okay. Connie, thank you. Michelle, thank you for the second.
I always know it's your job, Connie. I don't know why.
I know.
All motions go through Connie henceforth.
I'll agenda on this, he does.
Councilmember Carlson.
Hi.
Councilor Hanson.
Hi.
Councilmember Dahl.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Hi.
Mayor St. Horst.
Hi.
Just trying to get the ball rolling, Michelle.
I know.
Sounds good. That takes us to our proclamations, accommodations, petitions, and announcements. And we have two this evening. The first is the February recycling award recipient is Larry Stoffa at 355 Second Street North. Larry will be awarded for his recycling efforts with funding made possible by Grand County. So thank you very much for your recycling. And the Bayport Community Action League Easter egg hunt, which was tentatively scheduled for April 3rd, 2021, has unfortunately been canceled. So we'll just look forward to events resuming as soon as possible. But that takes us through our proclamations, accommodations, petitions, and announcements, leading us to our open forum where we open up the floor for 15 minutes for any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. And so if you would like to approach the council, please state your name and address for the record. And Adam, I'm not sure if you can see the gallery. Do we have anyone as visitors?
We have someone, at least one person from the church. Laura is here. Kushel, there's a Kay Johnson. I'm not. Another person just joined us.
Yeah, this is Kip Johnson from ACA for the Hills of St. Croix.
Okay, thank you.
So well, if anyone would like to address us, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. We'll pause for a second just to allow for unmuting. Okay, well, welcome visitors. And then we'll progress with our consent agenda, which is to consider a resolution adopting items one through nine. The February 1st, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, the February Payables and Receipts, the February Building Plumbing Mechanical and Zoning Permits Report, a waiver of statutory tort liability limits for the city insurance coverage, awarding a quote to perform annual seal coating as part of the city's street maintenance program, the hiring of Catherine Estelle as a part-time library clerk, the appointment of Marie Hidukovich, Hidukovich to fill a vacancy on the library board for a term through December 31st, 2022, the joint powers agreements with Washington County-
Anybody else lost audio?
No.
No, I can hear.
So John, sometimes it takes coming back in, but we'll-
There, I hear you. I hear you okay down there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Easy for me to say.
Our joint powers agreement with Washington County Sheriff's Office to purchase fuel for the police department. And our final item is a special event application from Run Stillwater for the Lift Bridge Road Race on June 26th, 2021, and that is tentative. That is, that concludes the consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments, or a motion? Oh, go ahead, Adam.
Madam Mayor, there was one recommended change to the minutes. If I can just share this. On, of the minutes of page three, the second paragraph, this word, where it says there were also differing options. I think there were two different thoughts going on. Staff is going to recommend to change that to opinions. There were also differing opinions. So with that, that staff makes that request.
Okay.
Has no changes.
All right. Any other changes or comments? If not, would someone like to make a motion regarding tonight's consent agenda?
I'll move to adopt the resolution of the March 1st, 2021 consent agenda with the change outlined by City Administrator Bell.
Thank you. John, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Michelle and Adam.
Councilor Dahl.
Hi.
Councilor Hanson.
Hi.
Councilor Carlson.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Hi.
Mayor St. Horst.
Hi.
As all.
So we do have a public hearing this evening. And so it is the public improvement hearing for the proposed 2021 city infrastructure improvements. So I'm going to call upon Matt to lead us in that discussion.
And Mayor members of the council, as the mayor indicated, this is a public improvement, public hearing for the 2021 Street Improvement Project, specifically for the assessments. This hearing is part of the Minnesota Statute 429 process, which covers assessment procedures, and it will be the first of two public hearings for this. A notification for the meeting was published twice, twice in the Stillwater Gazette, and a direct mailing was sent to all proposed assessment recipients. The meeting purpose is to discuss the local improvement before ordering it to proceed and allowing the public to comment on the project and the proposed assessments. I'll just provide a brief overview of the 2021 Street Project. Sixth Street North is proposed to be milled and overlaid, and part of it, which has asphalt curbing, will get replaced. And there's other portions that have no curbing, and curbing will be installed. Stormwater, there will be a couple of stormwater infiltration basins installed to help control stormwater runoff. Water portion will include a fairly small portion, replacement of a couple of fire hydrants, and the addition of a couple of gate valves. This work, coincidentally, will not be assessed as it is considered just general maintenance. There are three sections of sewer main which are proposed to be lined. And there, the affected properties will be the only ones paying an assessment for those three portions. Actually, the three property, the five properties that are on the assessment roll for the sewer lining will only pay a portion of just their lining section, not the whole three lining sections. Staff has received no written responses regarding the project or assessments. Staff has communicated with two property owners, residential property owners. Both were, obviously, they didn't necessarily want to be assessed, but they felt that the road definitely needed it. And they were just asked questions about the road, and one asked questions about the sewer lining process. Staff also met with St. Charles Church. And as it turns out, it appears that due to an exemption from the Minnesota statutes, the cemetery is actually exempt from being assessed for this type of work, which was actually news to me and news to John, who's gone through these assessments before. But staff reviewed the statute, and it appears that, that, that is a conclusion that we draw from the statute, too.
Hey, Matt, sorry to interrupt. Does that affect the Highway 95 assessment for the churches?
Councilmember Hanson, no, that does not affect the church property. The exemption is only for cemeteries, as it turns out.
Oh, okay.
And there are, yeah, there are criteria that the cemetery has to meet. They can't be for-profit, and if they're over a certain size, they also are not exempt. So St. Michael Cemetery does fall within the exempt portion of that criteria. Yep. At this point, staff recommends holding the public hearing and allow any of the public to comment on the project.
Thank you, Matt. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who would like to address the council to do so at this time, stating their name and address for the record. Reminder to come off mute. And we're going to pause for a minute to see if we have anyone that would like to address us. I know that can be tricky, so if by chance somebody does. Adam, are you seeing anyone raise their hand or anything? No?
No, I'm having trouble. No, I do not see anybody. Ms. Kushel is the only person here, and she is not taking it off mute.
Hi. Laura Kushel, Church of St. Charles, St. Michael Cemetery. I just wanted to say I had a great meeting with Matt, and if there were any questions, I'm here. But Matt kind of summed everything up, so it sounded good. But yeah, just if there were any questions.
Very good. Thank you for joining us, and I'm glad that you had a good meeting. So Matt, you had your hand raised? Did you want to make a comment?
Madam Mayor, no. I was just going to say that it appears that Laura is the only one that I recognize any different, and I assume that she wasn't going to comment considering what we covered already, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Great. Well, then, if we do not have anyone that wants to address us at this time, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to closing the public hearing.
Thank you. Connie, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
That went to Michelle. So Adam, please.
Councilmember Carlson.
Hi.
Councilor Hanson.
Hi.
Councilor Dahl.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore. Mayor St. Horst.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so that takes us to the council discussion portion. So are there other questions that the council would like to address during this time regarding this project? Everyone's had their packet for a while, and this project's been on our horizon. Anyone? Okay.
I'm good.
So it does not look like we have to have any formal action by the council at this time. So I think we could move on to our first item of unfinished business. Is that okay, Adam?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. So our first item is to consider a resolution approving the plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement of bids for proposals on the proposed 2021 city infrastructure improvements. So Matt, back to you.
And Mayor members of the council, as the mayor indicated, it's a resolution to approve the plans and specifications and order the advertisement for bids. A condensed version of the plan set has been included in the packet. If anybody wants a full version of the plans and specifications, I can share that with them here in the next couple of days. The plans and specifications have been prepared per council direction during the December 7th meeting. Bids for, if approved, bids for the project will be accepted on March 26th via Zoom, which is a change where before we'd meet at City Hall. Once the bids have been received, S E H will review the bids and, for accuracies, and then present them to council on April 5th. Recommendation from city staff is to adopt the resolution approving the plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement of bids for the 2021 infrastructure improvement project. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? We're back in shared, screen share mode, so I can't see everyone's heads. Okay, if not, I, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement of bids for proposed 2021 city infrastructure improvements.
Thank you. John, is there a second?
I will second it.
Thank you, Connie. Adam, roll call.
Councilmember Dahl.
Hi.
Councilmember Carlson.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Hi.
Mayor St. Horst.
Hi.
As all.
That takes us to our second item, which is to consider a resolution ordering the improvement for proposed 2021 city infrastructure improvements. So Matt, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This resolution ordering the improvement is a kind of a housekeeping resolution per the 429 procedure process. It, I just want to remind council that it does not bind the council to a set assessment amount, nor does it mean that we actually move forward with the project. That'll be done here in the next month or two. What this resolution verifies is that the project is necessary, cost-effective, and feasible, as detailed in the feasibility report, which we accepted last month, I believe. With that, I'd also like to remind council that this requires a forfeit vote from the council. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Okay, if not, would someone like to make a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution ordering the improvement for proposed 2021 city infrastructure improvements.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, John. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi. That was a weird motion, though. Did I, did I say it right? Yeah, okay.
You did.
Improvements.
Councilmember Dahl.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore. Councilmember Carlson.
Hi.
Mayor St. Horst.
Hi.
As all.
Takes us swiftly onto new business, which is to, the first item is to consider a request from Derek Construction for the extension of municipal water infrastructure to the proposed hills of Spring Creek. It's a residential development in Baytown Township. And over to Adam and Matt.
Madam Mayor, I can start up. I'm just gonna, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just can provide a short overview, as this was discussed at the workshop. And city staff is primarily looking for direction tonight rather than any formal action on this work. So we'll definitely come back at the April council meeting. Also, I'd just like to say that the developer, the engineer for the developer is with us tonight. And if you have any questions for them, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions. So from there, the proposal or a request was submitted by Oth Consulting and Associates for Derek Holmes Custom Homes for Municipal Water at a development within Baytown Township. As you know, the city of Bayport has a joint powers agreement with Baytown Township to make that city water acquisition possible as long as the city has the capacity to provide that water and is willing to provide that water. This, this development is about a hundred homes. And as discussed at the workshop, would not impose a significant strain on the system if only potable water was allowed for the, for the residential units. So no water would be included as irrigation water with the proposal that the Derek Holmes is presenting. At this time, they're only asking for potable water. Without going into further details, which likely will happen at the next council meeting, the joint powers agreement, as discussed, allows the city to provide this development with water as long as the city feels that there is adequate capacity on our end. So at this time, staff is looking for direction to move on providing resolution next month so that staff can work on stipulations or potential stipulations for providing that water to them. As I said, the engineers are here for the development. And if you'd like to hear from them, I'm sure they'd welcome the opportunity to speak on this project. Madam Mayor, if I can just interject, what staff really is looking for right now, and Matt did a good job of just summarizing the status. If there's any other water-related information that the council wants at the next, when the council is asked formally to consider whether or not to do it, to extend the service, that's what we're looking for. Any other, any other direction or guidance from the council as far as answers that are needed, be able to vote on it.
Can I jump in at this point?
Sure, sure. And then I think we would probably like to offer Mr. Heeb an opportunity as well. So John, do you want to hear from Mr. Heeb?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, if you take a minute, Mr.?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, for considering our request. I think Matt covered it briefly. I can really just, mostly I'll answer any questions you might have, but we're looking at actually 101 lots with a community septic system. And then we'd be proposing and requesting service for the water portion. I think you went into it, and maybe in your workshop, I didn't realize there's a workshop, so I apologize. Or I might be logged in. But we are, we've been working on designs to minimize summer irrigation uses. And we're proposing water reuse ponds and have applied for a couple permits for wells for refilling those if necessary. But before you tonight is just the request or the consideration for the potable water and then the fire flow. And then, like I said, I can try and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Then back to you, John, for your question.
Yeah. I guess I'm looking for, you know, sort of some hard numbers in maybe some sort of a graph or chart or something of how we would handle this additional, I don't want to say strain, but usage on our system. And you know, I, I want to make sure the engineer, I don't remember the exact wording, but that we would eliminate irrigation from, from the request. Is that, that's already a problem we're having, and I don't want to exacerbate that problem in any way, shape, or form. So that's what I need to start out with to get me on board with something like this project.
Yeah, so, so our request is for not tying in the irrigation. If we can't get the wells approved, we have a design for using the stormwater. So we have two large water reuse ponds that will take the water, and that will be used for irrigating the lawns. We're also going to implement other water conservation measures. We can talk about that more if you like, but the proposal would be to get potable water, which, which is a lot lower demand during your summer months.
Thank you, John. Matt?
And Councilmember Dahl, to answer a couple of your questions, I think what I can do is, it should be, I've already had the engineers for the water modeling update our model on a couple of these things, not only for the development, but for our use in the current situation. And so I think they're able to put in that extra water usage from just residential usage and be able to model that and show that there's a minimal impact for just specifically the potable residential usage. I assume that's what you're interested in right there.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, and then I would want to make sure that, you know, there's, there's provision, so if, if this well situation doesn't shake out that we're, you know, we're not on the hook for increasing capacity to meet needs for irrigation.
And to that point, Councilmember Dahl, the developer would have to come back to us and ask for, because we've agreed for only potable water only with this particular resolution that we would propose next month, they would have to come back for ask. And I think at that time, I don't want to start running all kinds of scenarios with the water modeling, especially for one, it costs money, obviously. They might have to pitch in some of that if, if, if they're wanting to come back and ask for that. And, and given the fact that it might not come back and say, you know what, we don't have the capacity to make that happen. So they're already knowledgeable of that fact of that we may not be able to provide them, you know, with an alternative fill for those stormwater reuse ponds, even if they don't get their two high-capacity wells, so.
Yeah, some sort of visual presentation that would simplify it and make it rather than, you know, something we hear about in a presentation that's sort of nebulous. And so, yeah, if we could get something concrete with some data included in it, like I say, charts and graphs are always helpful.
Yep.
I agree with John. And I'd also like to, if we can, while we're on this recorded version of our regular meeting, have the attorney again explain how the joint powers agreement works and what our kind of obligation is there, because I think there could be some confusion in the community about that.
Certainly. Tom, would you like to jump in?
Yeah, I certainly can. So the, the city has a joint powers agreement. And within that joint powers agreement, the city is required to provide water to these developments so long as the, the capacity of the city, both the water capacity and the facility's capacity would allow it. And, you know, the only discretion that the city is allowed to exercise is whether or not there's capacity for the system. And so as we had discussed at, at our workshop, the, the proposal that's being discussed right now is putting in place reasonable accommodations that are going to account for that capacity issue. And if it is determined that the capacity is there, then pursuant to the agreement that the city has of the Baytown, the city would have to extend water to the development.
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
Are there other questions? Go ahead, John.
Mayor, I just want to make sure, I think, I think this is clear, but I just want to make sure that this fact isn't lost in the, in the decision process. So the developers are going to first ask- In the in the decision process, so the developers are going to first ask for their. Domestic water supply, the potable water, the fire flows. And their their irrigation plan A is to supply their irrigation ponds with the water they need for irrigation through wells. And their plan B, if they can't get the wells approved, would be to potentially come back to the city and ask again. Separately, I should say separately for a connection to the irrigation ponds to help them supplement that water, I think. I think that's clear in what I'm hearing, but I just want to make sure that folks aren't surprised. You know, a couple of months if the developer does come back and say, hey, we don't, you know, we didn't get our wells, therefore we. We might need to, or we're going to need to ask for irrigation water, and I see Matt, he is raising his hand, so he might need to chime in if I'm. Off base with that, you go right ahead, Matt.
Yeah, thank you, that is correct, but we do and have acknowledged that we understand there is no guarantee that you will provide. Water for irrigation, so we we are not under any. False illusion that just because we come back in, if we do come back in, that you'll provide it, so. And just just keep in mind, these are supplemental fill lines to the stormwater ponds that are used. Probably in drier periods, but like I said, we we understand right now that that may or may not be approved if we come back in.
Thank you, Matt.
So that that obviously you're hearing is of great concern, I think, I could probably speak for the council, at least I can speak for myself that. You know, if there's any kind of infringements of people using water for irrigation without permission. We want to make sure that that would be really detailed in this agreement. That, you know, developers develop and then they they leave, and so we want to make, I would want to make sure that there's. Action that can be taken if there are infringements, I know Matt mentioned that we would be able to see if there is any anyone who would. Rig a different way to irrigate by a spike in their water usage, but I I'd like to have Tom. Help Matt explore how we, you know, structure that so that there's language that actually has enough teeth in it to avoid that situation. Yes, Mr. Heeb?
Yes, and and I think in in the request we made, there's also going to be provisions where. So so that this whole irrigation system is being designed where it's owned by the homeowners association. So there's pumps within the pond that pump, so it's not unless somebody does an illegal interconnection between that system. They they do not have the ability to unless they would would go do it themselves and connect.
Right, and that's that is the taking the action upon themselves and.
You're right.
Thing is something that we want to make sure that there's enough discouragement in that language to ensure that that doesn't happen. Am I am I misstating anything, council, please?
No.
I.
No, I'm I'm pretty much with you in lockstep, Mayor. Yeah, I'm I'm, I mean. I'm just, from my standpoint, I'm not in favor of of lawns being watered, so. It's a it's a gross misuse of a precious resource, so I'd have a really hard time getting behind. Throwing water that could be used in a in a potable situation on yards, so that's just my personal. Opinion on the matter.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the council? There's no action required tonight, is that correct, Adam?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, do you feel like you have the direction that you need to proceed?
Yes, yeah, I think the the question or the the feedback that Councilor Dahl provided. Along with the the rest of the consensus of the council, I think Matt and I and Tom and John all have our marching direction. We will bring this back next month.
Great, it would be nice in the future if there weren't news articles that say that this is all a done deal in. Going forward as well, so I don't know if all of you saw that in the Pioneer Press, but. That's kind of putting the cart before the horse, so we do like to take care of business and have a voice before things are communicated externally, so. Please keep that in mind as things are progress. It adds to a lot of confusion and questions, so.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I think we can move on to item number two, is that correct?
I, yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so let's discuss the status of the Inspiration Stewardship Foundation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, the just for every, I know that we have a new council member, and it's been a while, it's been over a year now that we discussed this entity. The the foundation was originally in the developers agreements back when Inspiration was first developed. And the foundation, just for the public's information, foundation was the group or the the body that was supposed to be responsible for maintaining the prairies. Up in the Inspiration area, that's all the Prairies for February's information again is city owned property, but it's maintained by the by the. Foundation, because the foundation, it was formed legally back in 2015, but it was never actually. No one was ever appointed to it from either side. The HOA was supposed to make some appointments and the city was supposed to make some appointments. But other than the filing of the governing documents with the Secretary of State, which was it was then dissolved two years later. Nothing ever happened with the foundation, since that time or from the inception, the HOA has been maintaining the prairie. So the residents in Inspiration have been paying their prairie maintenance fees to the HOA. As well as separately or in addition, the their HOA fees. Some of the residents, we've been informed, would like that actually the foundation forms, so they're not paying the HOA, just so it's a little more above board. So the HOA had contacted the city, we've been in touch with their president and a couple of their members. Over the year to. The foundation, we discussed it with our attorney, several of our attorneys over the last two years. And the city's position is to basically reform it as it was originally intended. And then if any changes wanted to be made to the foundation, the that board that had been appointed can go through the process of doing that. So with that, the the city is supposed to make three appoint appointments and the HOA is entitled to two appointments. And then there is a non-voting member from the Minnesota Land Trust that kind of just participates and oversees it, but is not a voting member. Two of the three appointments are supposed to be residents that the city city appoints. And then one is supposed to be a city representative, either a city councilperson or a city staff person is what the what the intention was. So what I brought before the council tonight is just again to let the council know that this is kind of back being created. I did include the legal documents that were included back in 2015. As well as the the minutes that the council took. Or the minutes of the the actions that the council took. And the bylaws for the for the foundation. So what I'm looking for now is authorization to start soliciting the resident positions and then that would come back. Hopefully, in the next month. At the next meeting, and if the council wants to make a recommendation for the the city representative, again, a councilperson or a staff person. Or someone associated with the city, a kind of a city official, they can either do that at this time or give staff direction to. Coordinate that and they can make that appointment at the next meeting as well. So with that, any other questions that the council has, I'm happy to discuss, Tom and I did discuss it, so if there's any legal questions. You can apply with that as well.
Great, thank you, any questions from the council? Recommendations on who from this either city staff or or council would want to take that role?
I'll throw my name in the hat if nobody else is interested, I'm I'm interested in what would happen with that. Group in, so anyway, just putting that out there.
Councilmember Dahl, sorry, Madam Mayor.
Is it possible for. Councilmember Dahl to be considered one of those residents or are are city council members excluded from the resident category?
It's not, it's it, they're not excluded, it's technically there, you know. I wouldn't point three city council people because you'd have a quorum of the city council. But you could have two city associated people as long as they're residents. I would not put three staff people who don't live in the city, that would that would be in violation of the intention. But the city council could appoint, Councilor Dahl, who I forgot to mention, he did indicate interest a year over a year ago when this was originally brought up. And this was last product, and then two other additional. People, one of them would have to be, or he could he could fit either either category.
That's what I I was asking, so great, thank you, John. I I, for consistency's sake, it may be nice to also have a a staff person. On board, just so that there's that continuity and all of the other details that have happened with the land trust and. And Inspiration, so that might be something to consider and also, you know, inviting our planning commission friends, you know, just. In a.
Absolutely.
All those, all residents would be welcome to to raise their hand, but in addition to John, they might be, you know, if we're looking for people to. That have a passion for planning and they may be a good source, so those are my only thoughts, but thank you, John, for raising your hand.
Yep, my feelings certainly won't be heard if I'm not on that commission.
No, that sounds that sounds like a start, so one of, unless anyone else on the council has a passion.
John can have that role.
But I, Adam, I have a question, can, as a staff person, if you chose a staff person, does that person have to be? Because I agree with Susan, I think it'd be nice to have some uniformity to have a staff person, does that person also have to be a resident? Or can it be anybody in administration?
It can be anybody in administration, one of the designations has to be, it's a city official, meaning either a city councilperson or a staff person. The staff person doesn't require, is not required to be a resident, but the other two city appointments are intended to be residents.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure I understood that.
Does it make sense for Sarah to be in that role, or is there too much on her plate already?
Right now, I would, I would actually volunteer the city administrator or his designee. If I'm not able to make it, I think Sarah would be able to attend, but I think she she is the liaison to several other. Groups at the moment.
We are also very busy, we never got a meeting in the whole last week, that's how busy you are.
Hopefully, hopefully this group doesn't have to meet too often.
Yeah.
It, I don't expect it, I I've been working with the president, Mr. Haidkamp. So I'm, I'm volunteering.
Hey, good choice.
Or, and I think Susan made a good point to check in with the planning commission, see. They, any of them, I think Rob McManus also maybe someone who would be interested in something like this, just to throw another name out there.
Staff does have a couple residents that have.
We have.
Made it known that.
There are those names, yeah, there's someone in Inspiration even that was interested, so in.
So.
Doing something for the city, actually it's Marie Haidukovich's husband. Who we just appointed to the library board.
That's great, we're very excited that residents want to get, so, Adam, I. Counsel. Our third role?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So Adam and John and then.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Fun for me.
Adam, is that okay?
Yes, I actually if. Are we making those formal appointments of myself and Councilor Dahl at this time or. Or is the council just directing us to solicit the third person?
Do you want us to, do you want us to make it formal?
We'll just, we need to appoint them at some point formally, so we can do this. We need to appoint them at some point formally.
Allow some time.
We don't need any formal.
Okay.
Action taken.
Great, so that takes. Bridge and culvert inspection. To proceed with plans and specifications for proposed improvements, so with that, Matt and John.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. And could you bring up the map? And then walls. Need an inspection. Slash, regular circle called. Culverts. And if you want to, I included the first couple of pages essentially the executive summary of the inspection report in the packet. I did not include all the inspection sheets as they're in min dot language, which is essentially a foreign language. And you'd just be confused by them anyway, as I was, so most of the stuff is in the summary report. But we did inspect all eleven of them, there are two box culverts, concrete box culverts that do need attention here. Sooner rather than later. They are located between Fourth Street North and Fifth Street North and then Fifth Street North and Sixth Street North. In the map here, there are B C zeros or B P C zero zero three and zero zero five. So they're on the alley crossings just south of Third Avenue North, so essentially if you're. By the school and you head west on Third Avenue North, there are the crossings and the alleys. So what the engineer has found is that they're in fairly poor condition and he has recommended that the crossings be posted for a five ton weight limit. Essentially what that means is that no vehicle over five tons can cross them, now the the primary. Issue that this brings up is the garbage hauler that goes through there, almost all of the alleys are used for. Reset garbage and recycling pickup, and so we've rerouted that portion as of right now, so. At some point, that might play a role in our timing and how fast we want to fix these, but it's also a financial issue on. Our ability to fix them also. Also attached is a cost estimate for completing plans and specifications by S E H. One thing I want to note is over and above a normal plans and specifications. Estimate from S E H is the structural engineering services and the hydraulic or hydrologic and hydraulic design. The structural engineering services deals with. The ability to use a certain type of box culvert or the specifications of the box culvert for these crossings. And then the hydrologic and hydraulic design deals with the flow of the creek through them. Now, I do want to point out that we could very, and this might likely have happened in the past. We could very well have a contractor come pull all these things out and put a box culvert in that we found. At the nearest concrete company, but my preference obviously would be that they be designed specifically. To take the flow of the creek and that where that's where this comes in, where there's extra services on this cost estimate. The construction estimate, as discussed by. The construction estimate, as discussed by S E H and city staff, is somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that number does not include any engineering fees. I do want to remind everybody that this cost estimate here is just for plans and specifications and bidding. It does not include construction engineering oversight. There are, there's approximately three point one five million in the street improvement fund as currently listed. We have been doing multiple projects these past couple of years. And so we are definitely depleting that fund. We do put money in it every year, but we have recently been taking more money out than what we've put in it. If we complete the 2021 improvement project and this project, it's likely estimated to drop to about two point eight million dollars. This project has not been included in the capital improvement plan, just because we didn't know the, the potential issues that we had with the culverts and we didn't want to throw a cost estimate out there. The inspection report was included in the improvement project. But not an estimate for bridge replacement or culvert replacement. I do want to point out that we did include seventy thousand in the capital improvement plan for changing out street lighting on Fifth Avenue. And if there was a preference from staff, we would do obviously bridge replacement before we did street rail lighting replacement. So some of the funding could come from that line item in the capital improvement plan. Of note, the plans and specs could be completed this year. And they would be probably good for a couple of years with a couple of updates needed, potentially in the next couple of years. But the plans and specs would also be used to get a better idea of a cost estimate for the actual replacement. So maybe we can plan better for the future too, if we aren't able to, to afford to replace those box culverts at this time. I know John mentioned, John Perotti mentioned a couple of weeks ago that there is the potential to, that the availability of the box culverts might depend on how we proceed forward with this project. If we can't get something that's special order like this item, that we might actually have to wait a year also. So at this time, staff would recommend that the council authorize S E H to complete plans and specs for the box culvert replacement work as defined in the proposal. I'm open to taking any questions, if you have any, on that. Authorization.
Thank you, Matt. Are there questions from the council?
No, I can just say from walking by them for as many years I've lived in the neighborhood I'm in, which is about five years now. They're, the, the two we're talking about are rough, really rough. I'm long overdue. Or maybe not long overdue, but time.
So if you read through the report, I just want to reiterate. It, it's not necessarily an immediate concern by the bridge inspector. He does say that they can be replaced sometime in the next five years. With that said though, there is some degradation to a couple of, and. There are other issues, you know, you don't have, you don't have the ability to go over them with certain vehicles, obviously.
Ash collection. Right. Being one, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, look, looking at that report, it sounds, to me, it seems like we need to start plugging away on some of these. And if those are the two identified as the worst in the report, I, I'm in favor of moving forward with these, with this project.
You, John?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it needs to be done and I noticed that they're degrading as well when I walk in that area. I'm a little confused about the cost. So right now, it's about almost forty thousand just to get the plans and specs correct. And that's not included in a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar overall cost for the project.
Correct. So, so the plans and specs are, give or take, the forty thousand that's included in the proposal here. And then our rough estimate for the replacement was a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand. And that depends on a lot of factors too. There's one of those alleys that has a fairly long uphill climb that we would look to potentially pave with this type of project with asphalt. Because we do see some erosion on there, so that's definitely an added cost potentially to that also. The other things would be is it's likely that we would widen the current box culverts. And so there's, there would be an added cost to this. So it, the hundred to a hundred and twenty was a really ballpark number. I can almost guarantee that it won't be less than that and it could very well be more. And then the last bit, there would be some construction engineering oversight with inspector on site. And normally that, if you take that first number on the engineering sheet, I think it was like fifteen thousand dollars. Normally, that number is somewhere near or a little less than what construction oversight is on a normal project, so.
Okay. And then I guess my last question is, right now, we have a plan for the garbage trucks to not drive in those alleys because of the weight restriction after they're fixed. I assume the garbage trucks could go back to driving on them? Is that the plan?
Yep, absolutely.
I'm just make sure that I understood that. Okay.
Okay, Matt, the uphill one, is that the one you're talking between? Cause that's the one I looked, drove by today. The one between Fifth and Sixth Street, where there's a lot of potholes and stuff, or I don't know if you want to call them potholes, but things eroding?
Dirt roads.
Okay, cause I, well, cause I thought if you were gonna do the culvert, my thought was, well, I wonder if they don't just finish that. So I was glad to hear that you were talking about.
So the, the only issue that becomes there is it's a, it's a long uphill stretch going to the south. And without assessing people, you know, what's the limit between actually doing a maintenance project to cure any erosion problems to just paving the whole alley? And so that becomes a whole nother issue.
Okay.
So hopefully, we can clear up some of these things with the plans and specifications. You know, if we need half a block of, to asphalt the road, then we might come back next year as an assessment project potentially, just a lot of questions.
Okay, alright.
So it, it sounds like the, the timing for the, the plans and specs are, are good. I liked that you were looking at the overall C I P to see if there's anything that you could juggle and reprioritize to keep us in budget. So that is good. And I like a plan because that way we can plan things out, we can reprioritize and, and consolidate projects. So you addressed my concerns in that whole exchange. So thank you. Anything from you, Ethan?
No, I was just gonna say, you know, as long as you're doing some of those things, if there are gonna be other improvements on those streets, that would make sense to do them at the same time if at all possible, but I think they kind of touched on that.
Very good. Alright, so any other questions or discussion, or would someone like to make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion. I'll move to authorize S E H to complete the plans and specifications for the box culvert replacement work as defined within the proposal.
Thank you. Connie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle. Adam.
You, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Carlson.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Hi.
Councilmember Doll.
Hi.
Mayor St. Norris.
Hi.
Eyes on.
Okay, and then that takes us to our fourth item under new business, fourth and final. And that's to consider an appointment to the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission. And Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I notified the council last week, we received, the city received an invitation to become a member of the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission. This is, I, I had the opportunity on Friday afternoon to speak with the person who invited us, Ms. Dana Nelson, to get some more information and just some little more clarification on what this commission is. After speaking to her, we did, I did find out that the, the meetings are kind of a result of a process that they've taken with several of the other regional airports that the Metropolitan Airborne Commission has done. And they've found a lot of value in them, so they're starting to institute, or they're beginning to institute one for Lake Elmo Airport. And as a, one of the cities in the region, they want, you know, they want us to participate. So all the cities, as you saw in the, the information, Stillwater, Oak Park Heights, the townships that surround it, Lake Elmo, all these communities that are surrounding the local airport are, the purpose is for education and information. This designation, this delegate appointment, this person will bring information back to the community, similar to with our other liaisons, appointments. They do want the person to be an elected official. They said they, they, they will take a staff person, but they definitely want it to be a city official, preferably an elected official. They, they will be given a little bit of authority to, you know, vote on behalf of the community. But the, the commission will be asked to make some recommendations for this commission, that they're, if you saw their work plan, they're gonna be taking up a few issues. With the recent runway extension that the airport went through over the last several years, they did not have one of these bodies in place and they think that it could have made it a little bit smoother process. So that's part of the reason why they're putting this in place now, better late than never. The, the meeting times, I did find out that they are going to be either late afternoon or in the evening. And I spoke to some of the other administrators and they are appointing elected officials. Typically, it's been their mayor, Lake Elmo, their planner, their planning director has been involved in the airport recently. So that's actually what they're planning on making the appointment. But Ms. Nelson from MAC did say that they'd like the appointment by April first. That's when they're, they'd like to be able to schedule the first meeting, which is gonna take place in the second quarter, so. So I am asking the council to come up with a primary delegate and a alternate, in case of, similar to our other appointments, our other liaisons. And I don't have a lot of other information that I haven't already shared. But I'm happy to try to answer any questions council may have.
Great, thank you, Adam. I'm gonna jump in because, one, I don't, I'm not officially aligned to any other outside appointment. And you all are on one or more, so, and it's a topic that does interest me. And so if you are looking for someone to represent Bayport, I'd be happy to do so. But also open to hearing from any other council members, so.
I think that's a good choice. Does anybody else want to be a delegate?
I'll throw in for alternate.
Oh, excellent. Then we can swap back and forth.
I, I owe you some anyway, Susan, so thank you.
Well, that sounds good. Is that okay with everyone?
Good with me.
Good with me. My plate is full.
Your, a lot of your plates are very full. Okay, so we'll, we'll move forward with that. Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Someone like to make that motion?
I moved to appoint, oops. Sorry, okay, I moved to appoint Mayor St. Norris as the primary delegate and Councilmember Doll as the alternate delegate to serve on the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
Ethan, go for it.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan. Adam, please call the role.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Gilmore.
Hi.
Councilmember Carlson.
Hi.
Councilmember Doll.
Hi.
Mayor St. Norris.
Hi.
Eyes on. Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us for city council liaison reports. And I'm going to start with Connie because I think that you.
Thank you. Yes, yes. The library board did meet on February sixteenth. Kind of just reviewed what the hours were gonna be. They, actually today, they opened to pre-COVID hours, March first. And they're gonna stick with that as long as things go well. They are taking appointments if people are more comfortable just making an appointment to come in. But they're gonna stick with virtual programming throughout the summer. Especially to start with, they may pick up a few, like maybe a story hour where people reserve. But as of right now, it's gonna stay with the virtual. And then, as we already know, we appointed a new board member, Marie Hidukovich, or Hudekovich, whichever way it goes. And then the new staff person, like I said, was announced, is Katie Astall. Other than that, Jill said things are moving along pretty well. Our next meeting will be March sixteenth at twenty twenty-one. So that's, that's about all.
Great, thank you, Connie. And I do know that you have another appointment, so if you depart for a month.
If I disappear, you'll know why. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm moving up to Michelle.
Um, planning commission didn't meet, but I did attend the cable commission meeting. I don't know if, Ethan, did you wanna talk about it or do you want me to?
Uh, well, I mean, it was a lot to take in, so you can, I know.
Okay, I can summarize what we did. That's why I was there. It's kind of a lot to understand what happens in the beginning, but it'll start to make sense, so.
Yeah.
So I did chair the meeting for my last, last time before we elected the new officials. We welcomed Ethan and then Andrew Kading is our, I think that's how you say his last name, is our citizen rep. And he seems very gung ho and like a great fit, so I, I'm really excited about the commission going forward. So they have some really good people on there. We approved the audit engagement with Red Path. Though Penny Milhouse, or the director, was looking at maybe other companies that might be less expensive. And I told her, we might reach out to see how you guys feel about who we use. A few years ago, the lower. The lower commission used to get our four channels delivered. But there was some, they weren't paying. They didn't want to renew. And now there's new members on there. That's good news in terms of kind of a win for the. Looked at the budget and the C I P but didn't approve. The studio and the equipment right now because of. Two, so there are the four channels that Valley Access has, and they're gonna commit one to sports only, which they've never done before, because that's really taking off. They've decided that they would be willing to help with the franchise renewal process, because that's gonna be coming up. That'll be interesting for Ethan to see how that works. So we work with Comcast to have all of the channels happen. Elected new officers, and Ethan didn't have to do that, so that's good. He can get used to it first.
Hey, everybody, you seem so gung ho. I was like, alright, well.
Yeah, no, it's, it's good. We had a couple people that have been on there for at least a couple of years, so they're a little more. And so they kind of took the, the main roles. And the next meeting is May seventeenth at six P M.
Very good. Any other? You covered B C A L, so that's.
Oh, yeah, B C A L, not much happening unfortunately. Hopefully, we can have derby days. That's what we're in. Probably the garage. probably the garage sales too, since that's usually like first weekend in June. So we're hoping and it's outside. So hopefully people are going to feel more comfortable by then that we can kind of coordinate the garage sale. I don't know about the ice cream social. I don't know.
Are people still allowed to do, you know, unofficial garage sales, not through the B C A L?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. All right. Um, John, I filled in for you for watershed. Is any other?
You, Mayor.
Oh, no, but any other updates on your side?
Um, no, um, did, um, Adam, did we get our first half payment submitted to the Middle Saint Croix Watershed Management? Organization?
Yes, we did see that.
That was just something I, I meant to follow up with you on that. And since you're here, I figured I'd ask you in person. Yeah. So no, we have a meeting coming up Thursday.
Okay. And now provide just a little update. Uh, I did attend Middle Saint Croix. It's always good to see old friends there. Um, there were a couple of, of items they renewed, um, and appointed some legal and engineering services. Uh, of course, went over the budget, which is very healthy. And there were two items that, um, one, John, I didn't feel uh, that I was up to speed enough to vote on your behalf. So I abstained. But it had to do with a state funded water management plan that's been underway and coordinated with multiple watershed management area. So, um, but it did pass. So just know that, that, that went through. And then there, um, was a, there's a, a discussion going on between a, a private property and, and Oak Park Heights and water drainage. And so, uh, the watershed man, district or watershed management organization had been asked to step in. Discussion tabled it and asking to go back and ask more of what that actual role would be in that particular discussion for the watershed management before taking any further action. So those were the highlights. And, um, other than that, I attended the Fire Relief Association meeting and, um, it was business as usual. So everything's um, going well and, and underway there as well. And, uh, so with that, I'll pass it over to staff reports. Back to you, Adam.
Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and just to clarify, the one, uh, for the garage sales, as long as they keep it under two hundred and fifty people. At one time, we should be good. To that point, I'm just gonna, um, I'll speak, uh, kind of on a serious note. Uh, we have been, we have received a couple of applications for special events. The one is the, the Run Stillwater event that was in part of the packet. Um, that is of course, you know, conditional. If the state, uh, requirements or state guidelines don't broaden, um, past that two hundred and fifty, um, it's very unlikely that a lot of these large events will be able to take place. Uh, but we are still processing, you know, let it allow them to plan, um, in the hopes, some of these are later in the year, take multiple events to, or multiple months to plan. Uh, so we don't want to, you know, hold them up if things do, uh, get better or open up more. Uh, one other related item, I'm just going to talk about also is the, the Memorial Day Parade. Um, we are working with the Legion to work on that. They did submit an application. Um, but again, that would be incredibly difficult to police. As far as regulate how many people are gathered at one time, if it's still two hundred and fifty, uh, the cap. Um, it, it wouldn't be allowed under the state guidelines. Um, if everybody stayed in their cars, meaning the vehicles as well as the attendees, that, that's, there's no limit on that. Um, but the way that ours is set up. It's unless things open up more, um, before the NMA. Um, so that will be on the council's agenda next month and we can talk about it if you'd like, but, um, just heads up on that.
Could we do like, you can stand on this block and watch the parade, but you can't stand on the next block, you know, like, so there's only chunks of people and it's not really one big two hundred and fifty.
Um, the, 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 the policing that, and I say that in the, not law enforcement, but well, they're the ones who are going to have to be doing that. That becomes the difficulty. Um, we already just forget directing traffic. We have um, all, all of our reserves and our full police force, uh, managing the parade itself. Um, Chief Eastman and I have been talking about it for the last week and we're trying to, trying to find a way that, um, it can, it can take place. I know the Legion and the residents really would like it. The city, the city's eager to have events back in the city. I mean, they're part of the fun, part of the whole year. So we are, we are working on that. Um,
Okay.
And.
Maybe you can get some of the vets in, in uniforms to police, you know, so they look official.
We're, we're, we're looking at all options.
Okay.
So, um, that, Chief Eisener, you're up, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, for the month of February, we had fifty-two calls compared to night, uh, seventy-seven in February of twenty twenty. Our year-to-date calls are a hundred and eleven compared to year-to-date total of last year, a hundred and sixty-eight. Although our calls are down, we did have assisted Lake Elmo during that cold snap. When it was thirty-some below at a structure fire along ninety-four there. And then last Thursday, we were busy. We had a structure fire in West Lakeland Township and two hours later, we were up in Stillwater helping them out. So the call volume is down, but it seems the bigger calls are coming more often. We are back to, uh, in-person drills. We had CPR as well, and our SCBA quarterly re, uh, review. Uh, fire inspections are ongoing. Our vaccination of our members were completed, uh, in February. Our squad meetings are back in person following CDC guidelines, which is nice. It's, it's finally, it's nice to get back and see fellow firefighters outside of calls. It's a lot of stress when you only see people when you're at a high stress level. Um, our meetings are Washington County Fire Chiefs, uh, Fire Improvement Team. Uh, the Fire Department Structure Con, Instructor Conference has been put, pushed back again. So that'll be two years in a row. We won't be attending. Um, safety reminder is please use caution, uh, when walking outside during the freeze and thaw, snow melt. As this last weekend, we've had people take a digger with, uh, that ice underneath the snow and just refreezing. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? I think that's good. Thank you very much.
Chief Eastman, you're up next, please.
Good evening.
You lost your audio, Laura.
I'm there in council. Uh, for upcoming events, we have a, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Good evening. It's nice to see you all. Uh, we have an upcoming, um, training that wasn't included in here. It was kind of an emergency setup. Uh, on three-ten, we have, um, our use of force training. You might know there's some statute changes with the use of force. Some to do with last, um, the civil unrest and the fires in Minneapolis. And so the legislative body have made some changes. Due to that, we're doing a use of force training on the tenth. Also doing fit tests for our gas masks. We have, um, continual updates by Zoom meetings and personal meetings about civil unrest and getting ready for that. You should know that our, um, as you may know, we have eight staff, including our part timers. And so we have no plans to assist St. Paul or Minneapolis. However, sometimes those civil unrests come to Stillwater or somewhere in Washington County where we might be called on to assist, whether it be securing, uh, a city hall, um, you know, a police department or whatever the needs are. Um, but we will definitely take care of our city first. Um, I want to update you on the part-time peace officer position. Uh, that's posted through the fifteenth. I currently have three applications compared to the past of forty or fifty. So that should tell you where the climate is as far as trying to get good, it's, um, Hanson asked me about our last meeting about our, um, stats for twenty twenty-one. We currently have nine hundred and forty incidents and that's calls, stuff initiated and responses. In, uh, twenty twenty, we had nine thousand two hundred and forty-six and in twenty nineteen, we had six thousand five hundred and fifty. Um, I want to apologize. We didn't have enough time during that workshop to address some of the speed, uh, analysis and stuff like that. I want you to know that I've been your chief for fourteen years and I am very passionate about all of this. I have, if Connie was here, she would tell you, I will come to your place. I'll talk to you in person. I could address, you know, the council members' comments, but not in a five-minute span before the workshop and the council meeting. I would like to talk about the speed signs versus the yields with you in person or on the phone. I'll come to your, uh, house or your business, whatever you need. Um, I would like to talk about speed citations, convictions versus dismissal on the three to five speeds. When we're talking about speed limits, we do talk about discretion, but we're also talking about times of the day. We're also talking about, as Councilwoman Gilmore, you know, pointed out, the fourth street that is so clogged with all the kids that are riding the, uh, not riding in the buses and in the cars. Now that we're trying to deal with that, it's almost impossible to go over thirty on that street. Um, today we got our second shots. We started our second group of shots. So we're, we're pretty busy. We have one staff that's still out doing injury after the, uh, pursuit. So we're, we're very busy, but I want you to know. I personally have gone out and done investigations. I've personally dealt with speeders like the last one last spring. And I take this to heart and I'm very passionate about it. So please call me. Email me and let me know what your concerns are. Like I said, I will meet you at your house or I'll talk to you on the phone. And that's probably the best way. Versus a workshop where I got ten minutes. Okay. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Chief. There's no, there's never a doubt that you are passionate and, uh, dedicated to serving us. So thank you.
Absolutely. Um,
Go ahead.
Your, your, your passion is appreciated, Chief. Um, um, did you hear from a resident? I, I know there's a complaint about, um, a resident that has a driveway on Fourth Street. I believe it's just south, yeah, it'd be just south of the school. That in the afternoon has a heck of a time getting out. I, I don't know what, if anything, we could do about that to, to cause them, you know, I, it's just, it's too much of a bottleneck for that half an hour, but just curious if you heard anything from that resident.
Um, I did. I responded. I called him back, left him a message. I walked up there and I'm actually been out there week ago. And then last week I met with Mr. Klein out there and then Adam and myself and Matt had conversations about it today. You're right. People are parking on both sides of the road. They're essentially are making a one-way northbound. They backed all the way down to ninety. I walked to the cars and I said, you know, you can choose to wait for fifteen, twenty minutes or you can drive out to fifth, drop your child off and watch them walk down second to the teacher. Who's always here directing traffic. So I personally went car to car, John, and, and dealt with that. And, but we think we have a solution. Um, we're going to try to make that one way or excuse me, no parking on the east side. So that when they go that one way, they can get out and emergency vehicles can get through. We couldn't anticipate this because of the pandemic. The kids are riding with their, you know, their parents versus the buses. So we're having that jam. You know, and we're hoping that it'll correct itself. But I think, you know, if we get, if we make it a no parking for the hour in the morning, the hour at the night, that will prevent it. And from what I can tell from talking to the teacher, the east side is where a lot of the teachers park. Because they just don't have, we don't have any parking in the city. So they're not going to be able to park there with, up to fifth and park. Um, and that will open that up a little bit, I believe, Councilmember Dahl. So that's kind of what we're looking at now and we're still, you know, like I said, we met today at ten thirty and we talked about exactly that.
I, I appreciate that. Um, it sounds like you guys are, uh, way ahead of me and all over it. So, so thank you for your, your diligence and, and doing the best for the, uh, neighbors down there.
Absolutely.
I, I want to, thank you, Laura. I think that's a great idea to make it no parking on one side. The east side makes sense since it's a northern traffic flow. Um, I worked at the school a couple of years ago and would drive and park on that east side. And there were times where I just couldn't get home. I'd just sit there in my car for like, eat a snack for like twenty minutes. I'm like, I should have just stayed in the school twenty minutes longer. So it could, I don't think it's going to go away when the pandemic gets better. I'm just saying, it's.
So, I don't want to take much more. And we've all been here since the beginning of the workshop meeting. But when that, when the school laid out the new parking in front and it was all redone, it, you might remember that they used to park on ninety-five and they would be jammed up. Their parents would get, um, frustrated and let them out into traffic on ninety-five. They'd be trying to snow banks. So I requested them to move the school buses on second. And that was, that's what happened. It brought it to the back roads. But you know, as we know, the fatal happened on ninety-five, you know, um, ninety-five. Yeah. So getting the kids off at ninety-five because all their, you know, all their parents were jammed all the way up to Pearl Park. Um, so that was the best, but.
Yeah, it's much better where it is.
So it, you know, we, we, we resolved. Yeah. We resolve one issue and then it goes somewhere else, but we're trying to.
I wonder if they could tell certain grade levels to go on fifth versus fourth or something to spread them out. Just an idea.
That is.
It's nights of you to go from car to car, but maybe they could say, hey, all you fourth and fifth grade parents, you take fifth if you're going to drop your kid off. I don't know if they can do that or not, but.
Good idea. I like that. And by the way, the, uh, the road that we're talking about, Fourth Street, the three houses that are on the east side of Fourth Street, they all have driveways. Only one of them is on fourth. The other ones are on the alley sides, basically, or I guess aside by the school. So they won't be as affected, you know. I, I've done the same thing as you. I'm trying to go to work and I'm sitting there like, okay, well, I guess I'm late. It's not that big of a deal, but, um, I appreciate anything that's going to be done. And I, I like the, uh, no barking on that side, uh, for those, you know, a couple of hours or whatever. If that's what needs to be added, it's a great idea. So.
Well, we can't hear you, Laura.
Thank you. And again, I, I'm off. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Sorry. I'm in the middle of the woods in my home here and I'm off. I, I don't have it muted. So I don't know what's going on, but again, you know, you can email me, give me your number, you know. Connie knows I've been to her pony preschool a number of times. It's just easier in person or, you know, on the phone. And I'm happy to answer any of those questions. And together we can figure out a solution, I think.
Thank you.
Pass on, uh, our best wishes to our officer. I'm drawing a blank on Cornell, was it? It was, uh, um, for a speedy and full recovery, please.
Will do. Will do. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Public Works Director Klein. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And Mayor members of the council, um, not too much, uh, reports. I think I already did enough reporting, um, during the regular meeting. Um, staff's, uh, um, been fairly busy, um, these nuisance snowstorms. Um, and then of course, with the hockey and pleasure rinks, we get good ice. There's cold period and then all of a sudden it becomes warm and uh, obviously the rinks are now closed, um, probably permanently. Um, staff has, uh, kept busy this month, um, worked with multiple land use matters, mostly with, uh, um, Assistant Administrator Taylor, um, a couple of river shoreline permits. Um, lighting request for business. Um, couple of infrastructure, um, questions. Um, also worked on, we're completing work for the municipal stormwater MS four, um, work permit. Um, that is due in April and a big portion of that deals with phosphorus in the city. Um, and so we'll have more on that here in the near future because there's, uh, um, reporting regulations that go along with that and, um, uh, projects likely that will have to get done and, um, community education, uh, also incorporated into that. Um, with that, stand for questions.
Any additional questions for Matt?
I just have a, a quick one from, um, from before. Matt, you mentioned about St. Croix Prepping and, and talking to Inspiration about their, uh, irrigation. And if you could, um, follow up with us on, you know, kind of what the outcome was on, um, their usage and um, keep us in the loop on that. I know I would certainly appreciate it and it can just, doesn't have to be at a council level. Just email me personally or something like that would work.
Yeah. So just, uh, I, I can provide a little update on that already. Um, Inspiration actually does a fairly decent job of, um, the last four years, they've primarily come down, um, in usage, uh, because I have worked with them here in the past. Um, they do have won, uh, their new area in that periwinkle place there. They had high usage last year mostly to get that sod to grow essentially. And so they'll be looking to, to reduce that amount. Um, as far as St. Croix Prep, they're actually doing quite a bit out there. When I talked to the, uh, um, the grounds guy or the, essentially the engineer there. Um, he indicated that they're doing a Wi-Fi system, uh, that also includes, um, radar. Um, so they can look at future forecasts, past forecast. Um, they'll also be putting in ground sensors um, to measure the actual, um, moisture in the ground. Um, so it will be really interesting to see, uh, what their usage, um, becomes this next year. So.
Yeah. Hats off to anybody that can, I mean, that technology is available and, um, it can make a pretty big difference. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
And, uh,
Go ahead.
Well, sorry, I was just going to tell you, piggyback off that, um, this, this conversation of water, you know, resources is not over. It's not just, oh, you know, we're going to be talking about this for the next forever. It's, it's going to be a constant, uh, discussion. So, um, yeah, the staff can definitely bring, provide the updates on where we're at with all the aspects. So.
It is helpful when I know that a communication went out, at least one or more from Matt to. It is helpful when I know that a communication went out at least one or more from Matt to the, the residents in Inspiration, and obviously that's paying off. If in those communications you can uh copy and forward to in that kind of instance to the council, so we just have a pulse of what's going on, that would be super helpful. Great, and that takes us, I believe, to our assistant and administrator, so Adam and Sarah.
Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, we currently accepting applications for the part-time office support specialist position until March eighth. And the Bayport newsprint newsletter is slated for mailing um in mid-March. I'm working on various grant activities as well as drafting public engagement materials for the traffic survey. Final edits to the Conservation Easement for the Inspiration third edition are complete and being reviewed by the Minnesota Land Trust. Um, those will be considered uh by the city council at the April fifth meeting. There will also be corresponding with specific Inspiration property owners to request removal or correction of private encroachments on public property identified by the land trust last fall. Uh, the February twenty-third Highway thirty-six Transit Technical Advisory Work Group meeting uh focused on convening a possible corridor commission with Hennepin, Ramsey and St. Croix Counties and opportunities to leverage Metro Transit's mobility hubs. An update on engagement and draft technical recommendations um was also provided. I know that was a brief overview of my memo, but in the interest of time, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there questions for Sarah this time? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Back to you, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, next Monday, uh, I had asked for one more week extension for the new city website to go live, but on next Monday, March eighth, um, it, we will have a new city website. I know the council received a kind of preview of it. We, there's, there's a lot of pieces going on. Um, we just got our credit card reader today in the mail. Um, so we're gonna be taking credit cards as soon as we get that physically set up um and online, uh, but the new website next Monday, um, I, I think at midnight, um, I'll get clarification on that, but sometime on Monday, uh, let's, everybody can go to the new website and take a look. Um, we're still in the updating some of the pages uh with information that has, that was not uh there was a cutoff date as to when it would be transferred, so we're still making some of the updates of the things that have been added to our website since then. But the new communications uh that are gonna be able to available, uh, people will be able to sign up for text or uh email notifications for various topics, not just one general uh city uh news um email. And so that'll be exciting. We will have to, due to legal reasons, we will have to have people opt back in. Um, so we can send out an email, just one general email to everybody that on, it's on our current list um and have them confirm uh that they want to continue or sign up for others. Uh, but people can sign up for an account within the, the email or within the website, um, that they'll be able to submit questions or, you know, complaints, um, but also uh sign into the, uh, the other features of the site. Uh, so look for that on March eighth. It's one week from today. Um, we did have, uh, due to a staff, uh, staff requirement, we did have the fieldwork going for audit. Um, that's been postponed uh to next week. It was gonna happen at the end of this week. Um, but one of our uh staff members uh had to travel um out of the country on short notice. Um, so she'll be back next week and we'll be working with the auditors for that. Um, one of the, it's, as those of you who are in the uh so on social media have definitely seen the comments and the questions and inquiries about the coyote sightings. Uh, the city catering of coyotes. Um, so at this time, uh, the city is making the, the residents, you know, give, providing them direction to the D N R's guidelines. Um, and so I'll just quickly go over those very quickly. Um, you can go see the rest of them uh at the D N R website, which has more information. Uh, but secure your garbage, you know, keep your animals safe, supervise them, don't leave them outside uh by themselves. Um, vaccinate your pets for rabies. That's already a requirement. Um, but also if you have uh, if you're having problems with coyotes come in your yard, you can install some type of fencing, um, and you can scare them away, you know, harass them. Uh, we don't allow the fire discharge of firearms in the city to hunt them. Uh, we don't, we don't recommend that residents trap the coyotes, but that is legal. Uh, they're not a protected species. Uh, please do not feed the coyotes. Don't leave your pet food or any other trash uh outside. And again, just be careful of watching your small pets, uh, small cats, dogs, um, outside. Don't leave them unattended. I'm not gonna spend too much more time on it, uh, but right now the city does not have any plans to do any of the trapping or killing um or relocating of the coyotes. Hopefully they, as the food source changes, uh, they will move out um and be last seen in Bayport. So with that, I will, uh, I'm stand for any questions and uh had a very efficient meeting tonight, so I want to thank you all.
Any questions for Adam? No.
You know how to get a hold of me.
Yeah, we do. Um, very lots going on, so thank you, Adam and everyone on the staff. So, uh, with that, we have council. Any other council items or announcements or comments? Anything final from the council? All right, great. Well then, would someone like to make an uh motion to adjourn?
I'm readjourned.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
Second, oh.
Ethan, Adam, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Hi.
Councilmember Dahl.
Hi.
Mayor Sinors.
Hi.
Four zero, eyes on.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a great one.
Bye.
Thank you.
Everyone.